All right, well, I want to start by thanking the board for this opportunity tonight to present our 2019 through 2023 strategic plan. As the board knows, we did a strategic plan under the previous leadership, Director Mutzler, five years ago. That plan expires at the end of this year. So, we, in the Public Safety Department, feel that it's important to do strategic planning. We'll talk about those reasons in a minute. But I first want to thank my staff for their dedication over the last six months to getting this project done. Barb, behind me, Barb Crusoe, Denise, Chris Stockline, Chad Baugh, and Jamie Strazner, who couldn't be here tonight, and Deputy Chief Craig Wilshere. I also want to thank the PSD employees for their contributions. I'm not feeling real good for a minute.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Briefly, do we want to... Can I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sure.
Supported by...
Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Motion carries.
Can we just take attendance to Michael or no?
He's got attendance down. All set, noted.
The director's been working hard, putting a lot of things together, so...
Do we need roll call?
Done.
We already got it.
Oh, we did?
Very efficient. So, this is extremely efficient.
That's a formal thing.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Hey, Marie, I thought you were out of town.
No, no.
Last week in there.
And next week out.
There we go. Maintenance.
Why are you shaking things?
Thank you, buddy.
It's a shank.
Imagine it's plugged in somewhere.
It's like a ballot scanner. He can build and rebuild them with his blindfolded.
I love it, yeah.
Tear it apart, put it back together, 32 seconds.
There we go. Got that working.
We were just having some IT issues. We'll bring it up later.
We caught up on some of the formalities that we need to take care of on our side of the table. If you're ready to go, pick up the...
Yeah, I apologize for that. I had some message that was... had to deal with, so I appreciate that. I want to thank the PSD employees. They really... My staff, as I was saying, you know, really, you know, I gave them the option. I pulled them in in January and I said, you know, "We have the option to contract this out, or, you know, we can pull together and do this together as a team." And my staff pulled it together and they said, "We want to do this. We want to put this plan together. We know this department better than anybody, and we feel we can do the best job." We then met with all of our PSD employees and, you know, had conversations with them and included them throughout this entire process, and they were very supportive, brought back a lot of good information, a lot of feedback for the department, and so their contributions are definitely important. So, the intent of the plan really aligns all of our PSD employees with a common vision, so we can all look at the future, provides a roadmap for the department, for the board. We can take a look at... We do two-year budgeting, which is awesome, but we also need to look long into the future, beyond the two years, and what are the costs going to be to keep the Public Safety Department operating at the service levels that the Township Board is accustomed to, that our residents are accustomed to. And it also provides us guidance as we look to those two-year budgets and try to determine what the future looks like. The development process, we took a little different approach this time than what we did last time. Last time was really an internally-driven strategic plan, which really, internally-driven strategic plan, we do the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, but it's all internal. We meet with our leadership group, we meet with the Township Board, and this time we decided that we needed to do a little bit different. We needed to also include external stakeholders in this process. The reason being, because that's who we serve. We serve our community. We serve the external stakeholders just as much as we serve our internal stakeholders. So, it was important for me, and it was important for the department, to really include those external stakeholders. It's also a requirement of accreditation, which is important to note. Accreditation requires that we include external stakeholders in our strategic planning process, so I'd like to recognize them tonight. These stakeholders were picked by help of the Township Supervisor, and they were really kind of representative of our entire community. Darian Moore, Huma Mangola, John Anthony, Paul Talwar, Rick Ricardi, Steve Snyderman, Thomas Payden, and Kurt Takiskowitz. Thomas Payden was represented the business districts. We wanted to include the business community because that's a large portion of our Canton Township. We tried to decide, how do we do that? How do we bring the township businesses into this and try to represent them, because there's a multitude of different businesses? And so, we brought Thomas Payden in, and with him, and through the Chamber of Congress, we conducted a survey that was sent out to all the businesses in Canton Township, asking them about had they used public safety, police, or fire services, how they felt about that, what did they want to see, and we took that information into account during our planning process. Kurt Takiskowitz from the School District has been a huge resource for us, helping us through issues with the school, but then also, more importantly, we, you know, we've got 20... 23, am I right? 23?
23 schools and 15 are within our jurisdiction.
So, 15 of the Plymouth Canton schools are within Canton Township, and so, because of that, we wanted to have input from the School District on what they wanted to see from their police and fire departments. And as the board knows, it's a changing world that we live in, and there's a multitude of things happening at schools across our nation, so we wanted to be prepared as a Public Safety Department for that. So, the development process really started with picking the team. Who's going to be our core team? And again, those here tonight, Deputy Chief Wilshere, Deputy Director Baugh, Deputy Director Stockline, myself, Deputy Chief Jamie Strazner from the Fire Department, who couldn't be here, and then really doing a lot of the heavy lifting is Barb Crusoe and Denise. You know, they're the ones that are typing a lot of the documents, spell-checking our errors, keeping us on track. The timeline was critical. We had to get this plan done by the end of this month in order to stay on track with the Fire Department accreditation, so it was important for us to get all these things and take all these moving pieces and put them together to get this plan accomplished. And Denise and Barb have kept us on track and helped us to accomplish that. The next phase was to meet with our internal stakeholders, our employees, and we did that through a series of meetings. I scheduled meetings with all Public Safety Department employees. They were all invited. We did a SWOT analysis with all of those employees, and we took in their input, and we took into their account their feedback. And then what we did is we combined those SWOT analysis from those sessions into one living, working document to help us decide what is the need for public safety and help us make some of these decisions on our goals. The second is, we had a series of two meetings with our external stakeholders. These meetings were... proved to be quite beneficial. They were scheduled for two hours. They went quite a bit over the two hours, but we were able to get a lot of information from our external stakeholder group. We were able to learn a lot of things about our department and some of where our weaknesses are, and some of the things that we need to work on as an agency to improve. From there, we had to get accreditation review. On the fireside, we had to make sure that the direction that we were heading was going to accomplish the outline and the standard set forth by the Center for Public Safety Excellence. So, we met with them, and we met... We had a kind of a mock assessment of our planning process and what we were doing, just to ensure that we were heading in the right direction, and we learned that we were. From there, it's plan implementation, and that starts tonight. That starts with us kind of going over that plan with the board, getting your feedback and your input, so that ultimately, in November, when we bring this back to the board to vote on, we have a successful implementation of a five-year strategic plan. So, tonight, we're going to cover some of the goals. It's important to note that, when you look at the goals, we gave the board draft copies of the goals. When you look at those goals, all of the goals align with a township goal. So, what we try to do as an agency is, we try to look at the township goals that were set by the board and align each one of our goals with one of the Township Board goals. We broke them up into three categories: Police Department goals, Fire Department goals, and then Public Safety Department goals. Public Safety goals would be specific to the entire organization, so those goals would be across the board, whether it's police, fire, or our support staff, clerical personnel. So, we'll start with the Police Department. Again, you have a copy of the entire goal package, draft package, with you tonight. We're not going to cover all those goals, but we're going to cover... We're going to kind of look at the high points and some of the most critical areas that we need to work on over the next five years. And one of the things we learned in our SWOT analysis, and we started looking at data over the past three years, is we have some staffing needs that we have to focus on in the Police and Fire Departments. We did a couple staffing analysis on both the police side and the fireside. We looked at industry standards and best practices. Deputy Director Baugh is going to talk in a minute about some of the changes in policing, some of the things that the methods that we're using and the crimes that we're investigating, and some of the things that we're seeing as a police department has changed quite drastically from what we saw five, 10, 15 years ago, and so that has to change the way that we police our community. Recruitment and retention. We know that it's getting increasingly more difficult to hire and retain police officers, and so, Deputy Chief Wilshere is going to talk about some of the things that we're going to look to do in the future to focus on recruitment. We're also going to look at to continue to diversify the Police Department to meet, you know, the makeup of our community as well, so it matches that more representatively. And Deputy Chief Wilshere will talk about that. So, to kick it off, I'm going to talk about the staffing analysis and some of the models that we used to look at department staffing and try to make some decisions for the future as to how many police officers do we need to adequately protect our community and keep the service levels where the board and the residents would like to see it at. So, what you see on the screen right now is kind of the one-per-1,000 model, and the one-per-1,000 model is really something that the board has seen during a lot of our budget presentations. It's what we use when we look at comparing our department and comparative analysis to other departments. We look at this one-per-1,000. And historically, the Camp Police Department has strived to try to stay at that one-per-1,000 level. You can see where we're at today is at 92 certified police officers. In a minute here, we're going to talk about a recommendation that would bring us to 96 certified police officers. The one-per-1,000, using the latest information that I received from Director Foss and MSD, is about 90. We have about 97,000 residents, so if we were really staying at the one-per-1,000, that would keep us at 97. When we look at the other, the state average, 1.73 police officers per 1,000, that would put the Camp Police Department at 168 police officers. We look at the national average of 2.2 per 1,000, would put the Camp Police Department at 214 police officers, and the Southeast Michigan Council on Government average is 2.4, so you can see 233 officers is what we would be at if we followed those models. So, again, this is just one model that can be used to try to look at staffing or make some decisions. We also looked at two other models, the Michigan State University Staffing Analysis Study, and then we utilized a Bartel Staffing Analysis Study. Bartel was used in 2007 by previous Director of Public Safety, John Santamaro, and was also used earlier to determine staffing levels within the Camp Police Department. So, what we did is, we took the Bartel study from 2007, and we updated it with today's numbers. And so, on the far left, where it says current patrol staffing, 48 is how many police officers, certified police officers we have assigned to the patrol division. It's 60 if you count command officers, supervisory positions. What is important to note is that neither of the MSU study or the Bartel study take into account supervision. They also don't look at Detective Bureau special assignments such as traffic, narcotics, et cetera, et cetera. They are solely looking at the basic number of police officers you need to provide the basic level of response coverage for your community, report writing, nothing extra. So, with what we're going to talk about in a minute would bring our police officers in the patrol division up to 53, and that also includes removing one of our officers out of a special assignment, reassigning him to patrol, 65 with supervisory positions. The MSU study shows we should have at least 59 police officers in patrol. The Bartel study, it says 63. The difference between those two studies is Bartel takes into account a safety factor. So, there's a little equation at the end where you add in, and it counts for four additional officers to provide a safety factor, if you will. That's part of their study, so that's really the only differences in the two. Otherwise, they're very similar in how the equations work and the information that you plug into. Deputy Director Baugh is going to talk for a few minutes about our Part 1 Crimes, and in that, he's going to talk about how some of the policing models and some of the things that we're doing has changed quite differently from what we're accustomed to.
All right. Essentially, Part 1 Crimes is the report card. It's a litmus test that we use to see where we're at and see how to allocate our personnel strength. When you look at this, you'll see a small change moving over to 2018. Our projected total crime is going to be really moved over towards retail frauds and larcenies and that type of crime that's impacting our agency, and also aggravated felonious assault. I can address aggravated assault pretty quickly. Over the last few years, our agency's really been proactive in working with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office and the Victim Advocate Office to better understand crimes in the home and understand some of the things that occur than what we would traditionally just call domestic violence. And what I'm getting at is, a strangulation becomes a felony, so it becomes an aggravated assault, a felonious assault, and you'll see a big jump there. We're still working. We're really trying to understand how you impact that. We know how to impact larceny, and that's what we're going to get at. It's retail frauds, that type of crime, we can address. We've brought to you many times about how drug addicts do certain types of crimes in our big box stores, and that pretty much depicts right there where our crimes at. So, we have to respond, number one, in a township. We have to investigate crime. We have to have a presence in the community, and we have to engage the community. So, we always are looking at how to balance our assets, our resources. So, when we look at this report card, we have to find out what we need to do to be legitimate in the community and actually respond to this type of crime. Over the 20 years ago, let's say, when we were first starting out, we would go out to Meyer and arrest that person, give them a citation, then we'd go to court, and then they would get probation. What we're doing now is taking it a little bit further and finding out what occurs. What occurs, what's causing this property to be stolen. And if you look over here, I'm going to go through a flow chart, and I'll try to be quick, but like today, you probably saw a press release that came out, and I'll give you some background of how this occurred. So, we've, you know, humbly, but kind of boasting about the Police Department at this point, these stores come to us now and say, "Hey, Canton, solve our problem." CVS, Walgreens, Target, and Rite Aid came to Canton and said, "We're reporting this to you. There's boosters that are coming into our stores and just killing us with larcenies and stealing from our stores." It seems pretty mundane when it's less than $1,000, but over time, I can show you that first group right there, which is one female, she was responsible for over $1 million in stolen property over a couple of years. That booster group too is considerable too. And what we know, these types of investigations take a lot of work. So, when you balance this and you balance resources, you have to move some to investigations, not behind-the-desk investigations, actually in the field, applying for search warrants, putting trackers on cars, applying for search warrants for bank statements, e-fencing locations like Amazon. So, what these boosters would do, under our surveillance, we watched them sell many, many times to that first box there, we call it RNC stolen property number one. He's a Level 1 fence who was taking the property, putting it into a storage unit and his home, which resulted in five different search warrants. Then he would sell to what we call a Level 2 fence, who was storing it in a warehouse. And in 2017, the Amazon fence, which is that RNC stolen property guy number two, which is a Level 2 fence, he sold over $3 million on Amazon in stolen property in 2017. So, today, in Dearborn, we re-ran three of the five people on over 60 charges of organized crime, essentially is what it is. These types of investigations cause a shift in our response time, and we have to see how, and we have to address how our community wants us to respond. We have to stop the problem. This is how you stop the problem. This will stop it for a short period of time. But, on the backside of it, our response times will become slower because we've rebalanced some of our personnel strength to address all these types of issues. And you have to do it legally. You have 25 search warrants to apply for that many search warrants, seven structures, three banks, three online fence search warrants, seven cellphone search warrants, and five tracker warrants were sought in this case. That takes a lot of time to find a judge, to get a prosecutor to look at it, find a judge, and get it signed. Actually, wake up in the middle of the night and have your guys put a tracker on a car at 3:00 AM, then be ready to respond throughout the day. So, with that, I want to turn it over to Deputy Chief Wilshere to explain how this impacts the other side of things. So...
So, as we plan for the future, thank you. So, as we plan for the future, we have to look and see what are our priorities for the community. Our priorities are to get a police officer to the location in a timely manner in order to address the issues that the citizen has. As you see here, over the last couple of years, our response times continue to grow along with the number of calls for service, which can be addressed by, again, as we said, we looked at the plan and determined that staffing may be one of the ways, so increasing our staff is one of the ways to improve that response time to the citizens. As you see, at this point in time, in 2018, it's projected to be 22 minutes, which is up almost four, over four minutes from 2015. I know you've seen response times lower in the past. It's because, this is a more true number. This is from the time the dispatch call is received in dispatch until the officer arrives. In the past, we've done it from the time it was dispatched to the time the officer arrived at scene. So, this is a more true number as far as how much time it's taking an officer to get to that location. So, this is the number that we utilize. As you see, the calls for service have grown along with the response times. So, this is one of the things we have to plan for in the future, is how are we going to reduce these response times? What do we need as far as resources go to provide that level of service to the community? And as we look at the times throughout the day, if you look at... This is how we break down our response times per hour, and this is how we allocate our resources throughout the day. So, we have a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM shift, a 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM shift, and beginning of the year, we had a 3:00 PM to a 3:00 AM shift. If you look at the 7 o'clock hour, those response times are pretty high, and one of the reasons we attribute that to is, a call comes in at 7 o'clock, officers are in roll call exchanging information about what happened at night, so they understand what they may be facing the next day. So, they're dispatched from roll call, which they go to the car, they have to drive to the scene, and they can't... They don't have time to log in their vehicles because they're actually driving to the scene and trying to take care of a situation that they're responding to. So, that accounts for that higher response time around 7 o'clock, so it's usually about the computers. The area we focused on earlier this year, and actually over the last year, is we looked at what are our highest call volumes? Again, we want to provide that service to the community and ensure that we're getting there an officer there in a reasonable time. We saw that our highest call volumes were between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM. So, to address that, we took our... We reallocated our 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM shift. We moved it to 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And as you can see, in the pinks and the reds between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM, if you move from 2014 over to 2017 in the area of number two, arrow number two, you can see that the time stayed pretty consistent until we got to 2018. Between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM, those times started to drop, and that was because we reallocated our resources. The issue we didn't account for is that it actually started to increase some of our response times after that 11:00 PM, so they started to creep up also. So, and on top of that, not only did our response times start to creep up in that area, the availability of resources between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM are diminished in the Police Department. Most of the people who work the day shift, the detectives, the school resource officers, the special enforcement, they go home. So, the ability to call back resources and get them allocated to a situation is reduced at that timeframe. So, we moved our shift back for officer safety reasons, back from 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM to ensure that we had that coverage in the community when a larger incident occurred. So, one of the things we talked about is, with those new personnel, we would reallocate them to that 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM to now reduce those response times in order to provide that service to the community. So, one of the other parts of providing that good service and improving our response times in the community is looking at the dispatch center. If the dispatch center can't answer the phone call because they're too busy, then those response times are also going to continue to grow. One of the things we've seen is the call volume in the dispatch room continues to increase. Again, 2015 was a high year. It diminished in '16 and '17, and then went back up and projected for 2018. The key to this slide is to not only look at the increase in calls, because we'll break that down in the next slide, how those calls kind of break out and how we can assist the dispatch in improving their service. If you look at the arrests, so our dispatchers are not only responsible for taking that 911 call or that administrative call that comes in, or even making administrative calls, they're also responsible for processing prisoners. So, a dispatcher has to leave the dispatch room, which now diminishes the numbers within the room. So, if there's four, one has to leave, there's only three, and there's a minimum of three, so sometimes there's only two dispatchers within that dispatch room. And they go back to the prisoner area, and they have to process the prisoner for approximately 45 minutes, sometimes longer depending on how many prisoners come in and depending on what's going on. So, now that pulls a resource out of the dispatch center and, again, can reduce our response times when it comes to responding to our runs. So, one of the things we talk about is the possibilities of adding a program that the director will talk about a little bit more to address this. And when we look at this, putting a resource in place that can handle these outgoing administrative calls and these incoming administrative calls, which are a large volume of the dispatch and take a lot of their time and effort in doing that, and have them focus, the highly-trained dispatchers focus on the 911 calls where they can help people, you know, get that emergency dispatch and get those, the CPR and the pre-services that can help save and protect life are very important. So, if we can, again, put somebody in place that can actually handle some of those either incoming or outgoing administrative tasks or calls, it can help alleviate those and make those dispatchers more available to answer those calls.
So, the next area that I want to talk about is really, what are our recommendations? What are we recommending to the board? And there was a lot of thought given to this, and as we looked at the different models to try to determine what staffing levels should be, there was a multitude of... There was a lot of hours spent creating new org charts and moving police officers and bodies around to different areas. The last strategic plan called for a crime suppression unit, and that was five officers and a sergeant assigned to a particular plainclothes unit to try to suppress crime in areas of Canton where we were seeing an uptick in crime. And one of the things that we did under the leadership of Deputy Director Baugh and Deputy Chief Wilshere was, we were able to bring that crime suppression unit to fruition in the strategic plan, but we did it in a different way. And what we did is, we made it a special, what we call now the Special Operations Group, and it's an assigned officers that not only help our investigative bureau, they're available to reduce crime in areas of Canton, they're able to jump in and do some of these ORC investigations, but we also structured it in a way that we could put them back in uniform tasks during Liberty Fest, during other events, during things that were occurring in the community to kind of offset some of that. So, what we did is, we looked at it, and we said, "How do we keep the special operations group in place?" Because they're doing a lot of good things. We're driving some of our Part 1 crime numbers down with the activities they're doing, but still be able to maintain those response times and those service levels within the township. And the recommendation was, and we looked at this, is four police officers. Four police officers allows us to establish, re-establish that 11 to 11, or 10 to 10, whatever timeframe we end up determining, allows us to re-establish that shift. We're also going to bring one officer back out of an investigative group to put back on the road to augment that shift, and that'll help us drive down and put more officers on the road during our busiest times. We're also going to look at our day shift and how do we move some people around to cover some of those gaps. When we started this process, we looked back at the history of the Camp Police Department, and at one time, we had a special services lieutenant. That, through attrition, became a special services sergeant. To last year, the position was eliminated because we had to restructure and move some command positions around within the department because of the span of control. Our Detective Bureau Sergeant, for example, up until this year supervised 12 people, you know, between ordinance and detectives, and that span of control for one supervisor to try to manage 12 people and all the caseload, et cetera, was becoming increasingly difficult. And so, we reallocated the special services sergeant into the Investigation Bureau. And part in doing that is, what we lost was the administrative tasks that that command position did. They were planning. They planned all of our special events, they planned for Liberty Fest, they handled all the training, made sure our officers were up to date on the training that they needed. You know, they did, you know, community relations activities with Officer Esseling. Just a multitude of tasks, and so when we eliminated that position, I had to take those tasks, hiring practices, et cetera, et cetera. Those tasks had to now go down to other command officers, including shift-level command officers. And so, the inadvertent effect was, is it increased a little bit of our overtime because we now had shift sergeants and shift lieutenants... because we now had shift sergeants and shift lieutenants coming in on overtime to do some of the planning. I had to pull Craig or Chad off other things to handle some of that. So what we would like to do in the future is reestablish that, that command administrative command, command position. The budget during, in 2019 does not allow for that. But as we look at subsequent budgets and growth and, and revenue streams as they're coming in, my goal is to work with the finance director to be able to reestablish that position in the, in the future. So the next step is we looked at our current model, public safety service officers. Those are civilian employees and the workload that's occurring within our dispatch center. And with them processing prisoners, we try to make a decision, what's the best application? And how can we, is there, is the best model to keep going down that road and hire additional PSSOs? Or is there another model that we can look at? And we looked at this public safety aide. This is new to Canton Township. It's not new to the police world. Other jurisdictions within southeast Michigan have public safety aides. But what we're asking the board for, the recommendation we have is instead of hiring additional PSSOs, we're asking to hire six public safety aide part-time employees in 2019 that will augment our dispatch center during our busiest hours. So they will now become the prisoner processors, if you will. They'll handle non-emergent phone calls. They'll cover some of the desk duties. When the, when the desk officer is back dealing with court or things like that, there will be a face at the desk. Next slide kind of breaks down the costs that we're looking at. And so hiring four police officers in 2019, that, that comes at a cost of just, just under $335,000 for year one. And the subsequent costs for 2020 through 2023 are up there. This strategic plan, one of the things that we did differently, and I had some conversation with Supervisor Williams regarding, we didn't want to specify every year how many police officers we were going to need because it gets tricky as the community is growing and crime trends are changing. We wanted to take a look at it every single year. And so what we decided to do was make the recommendation based off our staffing study. What do we need in 2019 to keep the police department operating at the same service level? And then in 2019, we'll re-update those staffing studies and we'll come back to the board during budget time with a recommendation. And the recommendation may be to stay the same. You know, it just all depends on what trends are happening and what the call volume is doing. And that's sometimes, as the community is growing, is sometimes hard to predict. The next slide depicts the cost savings and what we're looking at with, with public safety aides. So we, when we put all these things up on the board and we tried to decide how many PSSOs we would need to continue handling the call volume, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four. So what I did was I showed you what three PSSOs cost. Three PSSOs would cost in 2019 about $216,000. To hire six PSAs part-time is going to cost the department $96,000. So that's $120,000 savings in year one. And then you can see how much down in year 2023, it equates to about $185,000 savings. And those PSAs again would, would be under the 29-hour threshold. They would work part-time. We would have coverage from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM during our busiest times. They would, it would be a development program. So it's also going to help with our recruitment and retention because I would bring this employee in, a high school graduate who's starting in the criminal justice program at one of the local colleges. We bring that employee in, we hire them and we help them with, through our tuition reimbursement plans in the township. And then ultimately, when we, if we decide that that's a good applicant for a police officer, we would have the ability to put that person through a police academy. So it really kind of helps with that recruitment retention efforts that we're struggling with as well. And we can bring those good employees in, have a period of three, you know, somewhere between two and five years to really take a look at them and evaluate them and determine are they going to be a good police officer here in Canton. Deputy Director Bond is going to talk about some of the, one of the big, other big areas of focus that we had to look at and came up through our SWAT analysis, we were kind of lacking in some of the areas of technology. And so Deputy Director Bond is going to talk about some of the initiatives that we're going to try to tackle in the next five years in terms of technology improvements.
Thank you, Director. Just to give you a little background with technology, especially when you look at it from an evidence-based technology. Back on that case I just mentioned, we brought in 29,000 pieces of property over those search warrants. That's a huge amount of property to be accountable for. And to have the software and to have the type of RMS systems that make things like that easier to mitigate the total cost of personnel assets are very important. The investigative technology that's out there now, it's a real force multiplier. Like when you approved the LPR, the license plate readers force, we're able to find vehicles without putting man-hours on the street looking for these cars and these people that put the trackers on their car. We knew where they're putting their cars at night and it made it much easier. Also, we're looking to embrace the community like, like we're charged to do in the 21st Century Policing Report, to engage our community in solving crime. Our best partners, as you see in the social media sites, our, our community and with a CCTV opt-in program and our version of, people can provide data to us to use to investigate crime. They could send a video to us, you know. And we have to find ways to have programs, technology-based programs that are compliant with some of the protocols of the federal government, which is challenging. We just can't use YouTube that easily. So with it also comes to upgrade body cameras. Currently today, we have police officers and detectives, they have to burn CDs and drive them to the Bobian downtown, the Third Circuit Court and give them to the prosecutor, and that takes a lot of time. So if we were looking at an upgrade in the body cams and it's in the budget, we're going to bring the fourth and probably 2019 for the board to review of a body cam system that allows for not only for citizens to provide information into the system, but our body cameras to transmit information to the prosecutor's office easily and it wouldn't be so labor-intensive. And we can mitigate total personnel costs by technology. When I talk about enhancing police partnerships, now we're, we're in the midst of this as we speak. We have a federal partnership that investigates complex financial crimes that are in the building. Since the last three or four months, we were involved in a cryptocurrency case that would be well beyond our capacity as a local municipality to investigate. We have a detective assigned to that unit and he's been to Florida, Calif, Florida, and I believe Boston and California is involved too. And it even stretches into Europe of a large, actually national and in the world, at least Europe, of a cryptocurrency fraud scam that stems right out of Canton, at Chirrell and Hagerty. So we are probably at the cutting edge of that by having this financial federal partnership in our building. With that, it enhances our forensic capabilities. We, we can work with those federal partners to look at data and look at phones and computers in ways that we couldn't do reasonably, or financially reasonably anyway, within the township. Data intelligence gathering, as we continue to do this, we, we have a crime analyst. Their role is expanding in the organization. We're really seeing the civilian importance of having an analyst in the building and how that role is really expanding. And our partnerships through our Officer Esselink and our property crime prevention, it's important for us to engage our community and all our officers to engage our community about how to not be victims of crime. And when we enhance partnerships and teach and coach our citizens, it helps to drive the crime numbers down and make us less inviting to crime. And over time, over this five-year plan, we'll look to see how we can bring some of that crime analysis and real-time crime analysis into our, our dispatch center and see how we can, with software and with technology, get the information out as quick as possible, not only in a reactive mode, but in a proactive mode to stop crime. With that, again, the partnerships, we're part of, we have 10, access to 10 investigators on the federal site in our building. We're a part of the organized crime drug enforcement task force, which essentially allows us to tap into 75 different task force officers and special agents throughout southeast Michigan to address some of our issues. So those partnerships are good force multipliers for us to save some money and actually provide a good service for township. So.
All right. We'll talk a little bit about the acquisition of physical resources for the, for the police department. Before I do, I want to touch one thing on the body cameras, and that is that the board, as the board knows, our body cameras aren't all that old. Unfortunately, when we purchased body cameras, it was a fairly new technology for the police departments. And we purchased what we thought at the time was the best body camera for our agency. It integrated with our in-car camera system. But now, after just a short three years, the body cameras are failing. They're not working. The batteries are dying on them before the shift even ends. They're, they're coming back and trying to upload video that's not there. So it's, it's, for us, that's a, that's a significant liability that we, we certainly don't, we want to correct. And we, we're doing some extensive research right now on the body, on the body camera systems that we believe would be better used in the future, would also allow us that, that ability, as the deputy director said, to transfer that data electronically over the prosecutor's office. But when we look at the physical resources, we look at our dispatch center. And our dispatch center, as you can see from the screen, the PSSO working there, he's got, just on his desk alone, he's got four computers, six screen monitors, telephone, two telephones. And we're just running out of space. When we have four PSSOs working in that room, we, we try to hang additional, we got additional mapping software and those screens go up on the walls. And we're just, we're running out of room to hang the screens. Next gen 911 is coming right around the corner. We don't have the infrastructure, the space right now to accommodate the hardware for next gen 911. And so we need to expand. We need to expand that dispatch center. And we need to have some additional rack space for the computers and things like that that are coming with next gen 911. And, and then as, as the deputy director said, it's really looking at that real crime center. The technology now exists to where our PSSOs can pull up camera feeds from our schools, from our schools. They can pull up camera feeds from local, if there's an armed robbery at a gas station, there's the ability now through IP addresses to pull up that camera feed and get real-time information. A lot of times when these calls come in, the clerk at the gas station who just got robbed is terrified. They're frantic. They can't provide the dispatcher with the accurate information that we need to try to locate the suspect. But if we're able to pull up camera feeds and we're able to see that, now our dispatcher in a calm environment is able to review that video and start putting that information out to our police officers in real time so that we can try to prevent and, and try to catch some of those suspects and those crimes. And so those are things that we're looking to add to our dispatch center so that our, so that our PSSOs have that technology and that ability to serve our community. Right now, we have one and a half million dollars of, of 911 funds budgeted in 2019 for that expansion. What that, what that probably doesn't cover or isn't going to cover is what is the fallout? What happens when we extend that dispatch center? And when we were looking through plans, I found a memorandum from Director Santamara at the time, back in 2002, when they originally, when they originally re-expanded the public safety building on the second floor. And it was estimated, the architect at that time estimated that that expansion would be adequate for 10 years. And beyond 10 years with growth, there would probably need to be a real look. So that was in 2002. So we're actually at 16 years past that. So partners in our architecture who we are consulting with on Fire Station Two project is also working with us on this dispatch center project. And they're looking at, how do we best utilize our space? So we've asked them to take a look at the public safety building and tell us, you know, where can we put the dispatch center where it causes the least? We get to boast bang for our buck. Right now, it's in a good location. Our PSSOs can see the prisoner jail area. They're right next to it. How can we expand that? Give them room, still maybe maintain that. But there's going to be things that are going to be displaced. If we have to push that room up, now that impacts our front desk. It impacts our sergeant's office. They, they get displaced. So where do we put them? How do we do those things? That's what we're working with an architect for. What walls can we move? Which ones can't we? So there are some unknown costs in this that we, we simply don't know at this point because we are working with the architect to try to make those decisions and keep, obviously, our, our goal is to keep those costs as minimal as we can, but while getting what we need in the dispatch center. So that, that's an ongoing project. We're going to transition now over to the fire department. We're going to give Deputy Director Stockland an opportunity to talk about the fire department. But very, following along the similar lines, we looked at, at some of the same things. And staffing, as runs continue to grow, run volume continues to grow in the fire department, we started looking at what is the staffing? And we're going to look at some alternate funding sources. We were very fortunate to get some very good news last week that we're going to share with the board tonight. We also want to look at recruitment and retention and then the development of a cadet program that will also help us try to aid in that recruitment retention. But when we look at the staffing analysis on the fire department, it's a little bit different in terms of the models and things that are used on the police side. The National Fire Protection Association has really two different models. They have the NFPA 1710. The NFPA 1710 standard is for career fire departments and deployment of resources. So it takes a look at how many firefighters do you need for specific tasks? For an EMS call, for a cardiac arrest call, for a structure fire, for a, and then it breaks structure fires down. It also looks at response times and the magnitude of other things. But in terms of staffing, when we look at it, for example, NFPA 1710 says for a single-family residential 2,000-square-foot home, two-story, you need 15 firefighters on the scene within eight minutes to adequately suppress that fire and handle all the tasks involved. And that is if there's no rescue involved. That is if it's just an unoccupied home. If you put a rescue or trap victim in there, those numbers go up from there. And so what we, what we do when we look at NFPA 1710 is we have to look at our staffing. And our minimum daily staffing currently is 16 firefighters. Will drop down to 15 after 8:00 PM at night. But then we have to look at it, how, how many times was there a structure fire? Do we have 15 firefighters able to respond to that fire that weren't out on another call of some sort? The other model that the NFPA uses is one per 1,000, very similar to the police side, only they do it a little differently. They break it up by region. And so there's a whole report out. And when we look at the Midwest region, the average is 1.43 firefighters per 1,000 for a population of 25,000 to 249,000. So you can see on the, on the far left in red, 68 firefighters is where we are currently at. That also includes our deputy director and administrative staff, our deputy chief and the fire prevention bureau. If you just take into account our suppression folks, we're at 63. 63 firefighters assigned to the suppression division. Those are boots on the street, if you will. What we're going to be proposing, and we'll talk about it in a minute, would bring our staffing up to 74 firefighters. And then the 139 would be if we were at the 1.43 per 1,000.
Good evenings. So this staffing chart here kind of depicts where we're at. Like the director said, it's 65 is what we're authorized at from 2015 up to this past year here. So with the addition of three firefighters that we were approved at the beginning of this year, our addition went up to 68. But with that being said, we're unable to fill those positions. We're having a hard time. When we get applicants, they'll work for us for a few months and then all of a sudden they're gone. They'll head to another department or we can't get qualified people that we feel are qualified to work that will hold up the Canton model. So with that being said, you can see that our, our run rate continues to increase every year. It was a little slower between 15 and 16 and that was probably the slowest in our history between those two years. But we will usually see, you know, seven, 600, 700 runs per year increase. And we'll talk a little bit more about that increase as we move forward here. So just because we say that we go on 8,000 runs or 7,000 runs a year, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's how many patient contacts we have. So a lot of times we'll go out on EMS runs, car accidents, so forth. We've got two, three patients at the car, car accident. We'll go out on a heroin overdose and we've got two, two people that are overdosed on heroin, right? So you can kind of see here that this projected graph here says, you know, we're looking at about 8,100 runs this year that we're going to have patient contact. But when you look at our numbers, we're only showing 7,800 EMS runs. And that's different from most communities because most communities will, when they head out there on that scene, you know, if there's two patients or three patients, that's three runs for them. We don't count it that way. We count it as one run if we're showing up at a car accident there. But it's just, just a comparison so that you can kind of see that the numbers are not always the true numbers of how many runs that were actually going on. So if we go out on a car accident with three patients, we may have three squads tied up at one time, taking all of our squads out of service and then having to pull people off of an engine or something like that to staff another squad. So with that goes this mutual aid runs. And you can see that along with, in 2017 there, we had a reduction in our request for mutual aid. And that was, as the director and myself, we saw our mutual aid runs up there in the 80s and we weren't comfortable with that. We didn't, we're not comfortable with other communities bringing their service into our community to serve our citizens. We know that they can't provide as good as clear as our, as our paramedics do. And we know that that's going to delay the response time for them. So we made a few changes. As you know, we made all the engines, ALS engines. We made our heavy rescue and ALS provider. provider as well. And so that when we're getting those, those staff on scene, they're able to provide that care as fast as possible while we're, we're still waiting for a mutual aid. But on the flip side of that, we also started unmanning those rigs. So we would take the personnel off of our fire engine and we would stick them on a backup squad. And that squad would respond so that we were getting that care from, from our personnel. And that's where you see that reduction down to 36 last year. And that made, it made a big difference of making sure that we're getting there. But as we see, you know, we're 700 runs, close to 700 runs up this year compared to last year, and we're relying on that mutual aid again. So that's a concern to us. We know that we're budgeted for that extra staffing right now, and we're trying to fill the two vacant positions that, that are open. And as we get them staffed, you know, it takes us probably, you know, about three to four months to get somebody trained up to actually manpower. So we just haven't reached that 21 manpower per shift to date yet. We're, we're still struggling to get that. But our goal is to continue to reduce that mutual aid request so that our, our citizens can get the, the care that they need as fast as they can. So as I said, you know, it's all tied into each other. So this response time here kind of depicts as our run volumes increasing, just like the law enforcement side, our response times are increasing. As the director said, NFPA 1710, they give us a certain amount of time to get on scene with our first crew, which would be an engine and a squad because you need four people on scene to be considered a crew. And that's about six and a quarter minutes on a fire run. So you can see that we're missing the mark by about a minute and a half there. And as, as we continue to see this, this increase in call volume, we know that that's only going to get worse. Increase in traffic, increase in call volume, as we're having two, three runs at a time, squads, engines are responding from the other side of the township or from another run. They're not in their quickest response area, and it takes them a little bit longer to get there. With the increased staffing that we're talking about, this should alleviate this as well as some of the GIS improvements that, that we'll talk about and stations.
So as Deputy Director said, when we, we look at those response times and we look at all those things being equal, the increase in mutual aid and, you know, we're trying to really track overlapping runs. That's, that's where we find ourselves stretched really thin is when we get, you know, we can usually handle the one, two, three calls, but when we start getting four, five, and six calls all within a, you know, 10-minute, 15-minute timeframe, that's where it really starts stretching our resources. And we are seeing an increase in that. And so we're trying to, trying to work through that and try to find ways to handle that. But the recommendation for 2019 is to hire six additional firefighter paramedics. Under the, the current model and the current contractual language, that would add two firefighter paramedics per shift. Deputy Director and Stockline and I are really trying to think outside the box, and we're, we're entering into some discussions with the union to really look at some different ways of doing things, just because for the last, you know, 20-some years, we've, we've always done it on 24-hour shifts. Does that make the most of the sense? Realistically, having our, our whole department, or the majority of our department assigned to a 24-hour shift is the most cost-effective means of doing it. It's, it's much cheaper. But what about if we took six, the six new positions and we put those on 12-hour shifts during our busiest timeframe? What would that look like? And, and so those are the conversations that we're having with the union and the conversations we're having with our command staff. And we're trying to find outside-the-box approach to really start addressing some of the call volume during the eight to eight hour because that is our busiest time. The good news in all of this is last, last week, we were notified that we were awarded SAFER grant. So those six positions are going to be partially grant-funded for the first three years. That's incredible news. We, we've been applying for SAFER grants since 2012, 2013, I'm sorry, and, and we've been trying every year. And so this year, we're very fortunate to be awarded. Not too far different from the police department, other than we've never had an administrative position, other than the deputy director and deputy chief. As Public Act 291 changed this year, that's the training requirement for firefighters as Miosha Part 74 puts more training requirements on, and then the EMS continuing education credits, et cetera, et cetera. We're finding it very difficult for the shift commander to be able to manage that, make sure everybody's up to date on all their certifications. And then there's the EMS licensure. So we went from having six, six ambulances licensed to ALS to now four additional engines and heavy rescues. Now we have 11 vehicles licensed to advanced life support. There's a lot of paperwork that goes in there, there's a lot of inspections that go into that. So what we're looking as a future consideration, again, as, as I work with the finance director and look at projected revenues into the future and as funds, if, if funds become available, we would look to add an additional administrative command position to start taking some of those duties, making sure that we're, we're addressing all those needs. From a financial standpoint, here's what we look at. So 2019 firefighter, that's fringe benefits and salary, that's all their PTO time, healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. $76,000 uniforms and equipment equates to 9,517. That's a one-time purchase to get them their turnout gear and uniforms. Turnout gear is good for 10 years, uniforms usually last at least five years. But we would, we would roll that into our subsequent budgets after 2019. Total cost for 2019 is 513,000. Of that, 338,000 is covered by the federal grant. So that leaves a cost of $175 match for the township. Same goes for 2020, and then 2021, we take on more of a responsibility. And then after that, 2022 and 2023 becomes fully funded by the township. Again, we looked at the fire department and, and certainly we could, we could project out and say if the runs keep going the same way are, we're going to have to hire six in 2019, we're going to have to look to hire three in 2020. We didn't want to do that. We wanted to take a better look at it every year and make a more educated decision and bring that recommendation back to the board on an annual basis during budget times. It also gives us an opportunity to see what, what revenues are looking like and what the economy's doing and things like that, to help us make those decisions on what, what is sustainable and what can the township afford to do. Chris is Deputy Director Stockline, is going to talk a little bit about the EMS services, some of the challenges we're gonna, we're looking to face in the next five years in terms of increased call volume, changes at a federal level in terms of billing and, and those things.
Just a couple, touching on a couple other things on that last slide there also was with our staffing. Just because that, that SAFER grant, I know is $840,000, that doesn't mean that we can't put in for another one in a couple of years if we decide. So like, like the director said, I mean, this was, we're very fortunate and, and I feel blessed to have this opportunity to get that because we've, we've put in for it many years. And now that we've gotten it, I think that we have a better chance of getting it in the future as they see that we're responsible and we're keeping those, those fire personnel employed after, after the grant. Because they look at that a lot to make sure that they don't just hire, hire firefighters for three years and then lay them off. And with our goal of sustaining those positions, I think that'll help us in the future as well, so. But touching on this EMS service, like the director said, you know, we really need to talk about reallocating our, our workload, our, our shift strength and making that kind of an eight-to-eight. You'll see on the next slide, our busiest hours, just like the police department, it's all about putting our resources where we need them. It's all obviously goes through negotiations and our shift schedules are negotiated. So we're going to rely on some good communication upfront with the director and myself and the union and getting into negotiations and, and the township bargaining team, getting some stuff accomplished for us as well. So we'll continue to evaluate that and talk with the union and move forward with that. The next thing that you see, I know that you guys all voted on increasing our transport costs to keep up with the private insurance company Medicare and Medicaid practices. And we'll continue to evaluate that to make sure that we're maximizing what we can from the insurance companies to help subsidize our service. And finally, evaluating our EMS needs. So you'll see here in the next couple of slides, we know that we've added some additional nursing homes and assisted living homes in the planning that's coming next year. I know we've got three, basically two that are starting to be built now, one that's in the planning phase, and then we've put in addition on Regency down here on Geddes. So that's added a number of beds for us, and that's going to increase our, our service, calls for service as well. That along with the aging community that SEMCOG says 140% increase of the age over 65. All these things are going to have to continue to be evaluated, and that's one of the goals in the plan there is to continue to evaluate these and take a look at these every single year. Finally, the community paramedic program, you probably have not heard of that, or maybe you've heard of me mention it in the past. This is basically a program that's getting, getting some steam nationwide, and that's working with some of the local hospitals. And when we work with those hospitals, what we do is we work on patients that we've transported there that are residents of our community and possibly going up and doing a follow-up check once they're discharged, right? And we see a lot of times where we're showing back up to the homes after we've just transported somebody for a heart attack or high blood pressure, whatever it may be, we're back at their house in the next day or two and we're transporting them back again. So that makes up a significant, a significant amount of our call volume. And if we can help out by showing up to the house, making sure that they have their medications, making sure that they're communicating with their doctors, they, they understand the discharge instructions, if we can pick up a prescription for them, whatever it may be, that they're not going to be calling us back again and be readmitted into the hospital. And along with that goes the Affordable Care Act, right? As, as we move forward with Affordable Care Act, if we go back to those homes and we're not engaged in something like this program, there's always that chance that Medicare or Medicaid can turn down our billing if we've transported them within the last 30 days for the same issue. So stuff that we're keeping our eye on and one of the goals moving forward with, with the plan. So this is just our, our graph of our busiest hour. So you can kind of see that from, you know, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning there, we're jumping up 100 runs and it continues right on through the day. So that's kind of our idea is working some sort of shift, maybe a 12-hour shift or a 10-hour shift, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, something along those lines. If we can manage something, something that will lighten the load in the evening, or lighten the, lighten the shift in the evening and put, put our manpower there during the day, that's, that's where our goal is. And then here's the, the graph that I was talking about with the assisted living. So you can see here in 17, 956 runs to those, those facilities. And in those facilities alone, we've got about 682 beds. We do have 682 beds, not about. And so like we said, next year, we're going to be adding another 300, 300 beds to the, to the township, and we'll continue to monitor how that's going to affect us. It's currently about 1.56 runs per bed. So as, as we continue to see this increase, we've got to monitor it and make sure that we're going to have the resources available to take care of these, these patients that are calling us for service. And then finally, like I said, improving our response times, that, that kind of boils down to technology. You know, we're still, we've, we've made some progress in the past year where we're got some GSI consultants or GIS consultants on board, and they have helped us with some heat source maps and figuring some, some response times out. But as far as the maps go, we can really, you know, when these guys and girls get into the truck and they can see a map right there and they're not flipping through pages and, and they can get in there and it's, it's automatically guiding them to the scene so they can worry about other things, transmission of radios, they can have the building structure pull up, you know, it's a wood construction building, it's located at this address, the closest hydrant. These, these systems can all talk to the firefighters as they're responding to the run, and they can focus on, on the run and the traffic and then reduce our liability. And that helps with our tech, I mean, our response times if they're not flipping through the mapbooks and, and waiting for somebody else to tell, tell them where to turn. And then that goes into the GIS stuff, like we said. So we've been evaluating our capital improvements, but that's going to be, continue to be a goal in our plan. We've made some great improvements on the stations that have been needed for a long time. We replaced the roof over there at Station One this year. We had the floor replaced or resurfaced. We've done some painting over there, some kitchen upgrades, and we're going to continue to monitor that stuff. We know that this station here, Station One, is over 20 years old, and Station Three is, you know, just over 10 here. So we're, we're going to have that in our plan and goal and guidelines and make sure that we're, we're working towards keeping those stations up to date, mostly painting and stuff like that. And then our, our equipment, we've been making improvements on that as well. So not a whole lot that we have in the plan right now, but, you know, we just replaced our cascade system for our air bottles, we just replaced all of our air bottle systems. Some of that stuff is going to be, the, the bigger cost items will be more like our AEDs and stuff. We're coming up on the, the 10 years for those, the lifespan that we got the grant on those a little while back, and we're going to need to replace some of those. So just stuff that we're going to keep in mind as we move forward and keep a schedule on that. And then finally, our fleet replacement. You know that we've purchased quite a, quite a few dollars' worth of equipment in the past year that's really brought us up to speed where we need to be. But those things change as well, you know, as the director will talk about Station Four here, you know, we'll have to reevaluate if we're going to purchase another engine. We have to reevaluate some of these squads with the call volume. They're only, you know, the 2016s or 2013s, and they're hitting 100,000 miles already. So we have to take into account that, that run volume and what it's doing to our apparatus as well. So we'll continue to work with Clark over there at Fleet, and we'll have a replacement schedule in, in the packet as well. And that'll be a guideline that we'll have to reevaluate each year.
All right. So I'll talk about a couple of things. The equipment, very expensive for the fire department, so we'll continue to look at grant funding opportunities. We've been successful in the past with AFG grants for, for, for our air packs. You know, that would have been about a $450,000 purchase for the township that was covered under Grant Cardiac Monitor. So as, as equipment ages and needs to be replaced, we're certainly going to do our due diligence and apply for grants to try to cover that. I won't spend a lot of time tonight talking about Station Two because on September 18th, we're going to do a study session with the board to really kind of talk all about Station Two. We're going to give you an opportunity to tour the current Station Two, and then we're going to show you what we've worked on for the last better part of several years now with, with the internal and then now partners in architecture to design a fire station. The preliminary design is back, the cost estimates are back. We're working with them to kind of try to drive some of those costs down and try to see what do we really need, what do we really want to do? But I think the board is going to be very pleased with the design and the concept and what the station looks like and what the future holds for Fire Station Number Two. But again, September 18th, we look forward to that. Flip to the next slide and we'll talk a little bit about Fire Station Number Four and why we're including this in our, in our strategic plan for the next, for next five years. Again, we're going to, we're going to rebuild Station Two, Station Two will be covered. The map on the left really depicts what we look like today. And so there's three fire stations, the blue dots. Green is, is anything from a four-minute or less response time. Blue indicates six down to four minutes response time. The orange is eight minutes down to six minutes. And then anything in red is 10 minutes or greater. And so what we look at, when we look at that map is, you know, when we're trying to meet the NFPA standard and we're trying to get fire apparatus on a scene of an emergency, where are our weaknesses, what do we need to do? And we know that we have some coverage gaps at the south end, and we've been talking with the supervisor and the board about the possibility of building a, or at least setting some land aside in the southeast Michigan Avenue area for, for a fourth fire station. Michigan and Lily, there's some township-owned property, so that comes to mind as a potential cost savings if we're going to look to build a station in the future. And so what we did is we had our GIS consultant, the map on the right, now includes what it would look like if a fourth fire station was placed at Michigan and Lily. And you can see there is no more red, Canton Township in the, in the box. The red has been eliminated by adding a fourth fire station, and we're able to increase that blue and green, which is the ultimate goal. So the five-year plan is really going to look at that needs assessment. We're going to continue to do these modelings to try to determine where the best spot is for a fourth fire station. And then we would like to work with the board to set, at least get some land, some property set aside. If it's Michigan and Lily, then let's dedicate some of that land for the future fire station if it's, if there's a better location or we determine. Start looking at that as part of the master plan for the township. And then it's, it's really, from there, it's really similar to what we did with, with Station Two, and it's trying to start establishing a budget, what the cost is going to be, what are we going to need to staff it, what are we going to need for equipment, and start making those recommendations over the next five years so that we can ensure that the future of Canton Township is covered in all areas and response times are good. So finally, before I get to emergency management, cover one of the public safety department goals, and that's really the workplace environment. And it's something that has been a goal of mine and something I've been wanting to address since I took over as director. And it aligns with the township goal to really look at our employees' wellbeing and try to address some of the, some of the things with our employees. And my focus is to start really, really looking at the mental, physical, and, and health wellbeing of our employees and what programs can we put in place, whether it's through nutrition or whether it's through physical fitness programs to help our police officers and firefighters stay fit, stay in shape, and stay healthy because it is a tough job when they're working, you know, 12-hour shifts, 24-hour shifts, and busy and things like that. We really want to, we really want to help them prepare for the future so we can keep our police officers and firefighters healthy and around for a long time. But more importantly, and something that we've really never addressed in the, in the But more importantly, and something that we've really never addressed in the public safety culture, that is mental health and mental health wellbeing. Our police officers, firefighters and even our PSSOs are hearing things and seeing things and doing things that sometimes the human eye probably wasn't meant to see. Some of the calls that we have to go on, some of the situations that we have to deal in, we're everybody's helper. We're there to help, we're there to deal with everybody's problems. But who's there to deal with the police officer's problems? Who's there to help our firefighters after they've just had to do CPR on a baby and it was unsuccessful? Who's there to support them? And we really haven't never had a program in place in the Canton Public Safety Department to address that and to really focus on our employees. We've had a chaplain program that the chaplain's gone out and helped the families of the victims and the things that we've done at. But then our police officer has to go in a car and finish his 12-hour shift by himself. Our firefighters have to go back to the station and try to cope and deal with this. And so, we are in the very early stages of putting together a Public Safety Department peer support team. Peer support team will be available when we have a critical incident to talk with our employees, work through those issues and be there to provide that peer support. When I say early stages, we've sent a group of our police and firefighters and PSSOs through the initial training. We've included our chaplains, we've included outside people to help with this, and we're in a policy development program of it now. What is a policy going to look like? When will this team be activated? How will they be activated? Who will they help? Things of that nature. It's something that I think is going to be hugely successful down the road as we try to deal with critical incidents, stress debriefing and things of that nature. And then one of the things, the other things that we're going to work on as a department is diversity in the workplace. How do we, how does, how do we make our department representative of the community, more representative of the community that we serve? We have to do that through recruiting, we have to do that through our retention efforts and we have to reach out to the community itself. And then we're also going to look at enhancing our outreach. So we established the community relations team that's going out and through our community and working with different groups. We're going to, we want to build on that, we want to make that better. We want everybody in the community to understand the services that your police and fire department provides, how you can access them and what we're there to do. And so that's going to be a huge effort for us over the next five years. On the emergency management front, I included, because Will Hayes, our new emergency manager, works in the Public Safety Department, but he really works for the township, really works for all of the township. But some of the goals that we want to include for emergency management is first and foremost is looking at the school's safety and security. We want to make sure that the township emergency operations plan is consistent with the school's emergency operation plan. We want to make sure that if an event happens at one of our schools, whether it's an active shooter, whether it's a natural disaster, a fire, whatever it may be, that we as an agency and we as a township are prepared to handle that and we're prepared to handle that efficiently and effectively and work with our partners at the school and with our partners across the region to make sure that that incident is handled appropriately. Our CERT team is the Community Emergency Response Team, that's a volunteer-based team, has kind of fallen off the radar. So, one of our goals for Will, Mr. Hayes, is to get that team back up and running, seek out new volunteers and really kind of reinvigorate that program and make sure that we're utilizing them at different events like Liberty Fest or, you know, Not in Our Town, things like that where they can reach out and help out. If we have, if we were to happen to have a natural disaster, tornado or something of that effect go through the community, would we be able, you know, if they had the training, could we utilize them to augment the Public Safety Department efforts in those areas? Emergency Operations Plan, you know, that's a work in progress, the draft is almost complete. But again, we want to look at that on an annual basis, make sure that it's up to date and then also make sure we're conducting full-scale exercises and drills on an annual basis. We just did one recently, active shooter, that's the first one of that magnitude we did, but we want to build off that now and maybe next time we'll have a train derailment or next time we'll have a natural disaster that's going to test us and our response capabilities. And then finally, this kind of aligns with the technology. When we did our full-scale exercise, we learned that we're a little bit deficient in technology in terms of some of the technology in our EOC Emergency Operations Center and then also in our command post. Some of the stuff that was originally funded through grants, when we built that room and we built the command post, is no longer working or even serviceable. The companies no longer exist. So we want to do a thorough assessment over the next, starting in 2019, do a thorough assessment of our Emergency Operations Center and Command Post and then start seeking, whether it's UASI or other federal grant funds, to start enhancing those capabilities to ensure that in the event that we have to open up that EOC, we have everything we need and we're capable to handle everything that could be thrown at us that day. So, that about wraps up our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Go ahead, Henry.
I'm writing down here. Thank you very much and it was a very good presentation as usual and congratulations on the SAFER grant. It's a four-year grant, is that what that is?
Three.
Three, okay, three, thank you. And I'll start from the end because that's where our mind is fresher. So, and I think it's a great idea to do this workplace environment, I think that's really good. Have you ever thought of even working with local universities? I know EMU has a psychology department and their students work with children at a reduced rate and I'm wondering if they would even partner with something like that, it would give them some exposure.
Sure.
For another program like that and maybe give us a break and, you know, so it wouldn't rely only on all of you just getting training, but maybe work with the university. But they have a good psychology department there.
It's certainly, it's certainly a thought and certainly something we're talking about. As with, unfortunately, as with everything goes with employees, we have to do it by the book with HR. And so we're working with the Human Resources Department to make sure that any type of treatments or any type of those things follow the township protocols and we're doing it appropriately.
Okay, yes, definitely, thank you. On the previous page, one thing we always struggle with in the planning commission is when these senior facilities come before us or assisted living, you know, they always say, oh, we'll have transportation, but as you've said, that increases our EMS runs, our EMS runs are increasing. And one question we've asked is, okay, this new facility is before us, are we at a breaking point? Do you know what that maximum is we can handle right now in terms of the number of assisted facilities we have now versus building the other ones that are coming down the pipeline?
You know, as the deputy director pointed out with the mutual aid going up, I think term at breaking point, I don't know what maybe that looks like, but we're, in terms of where our department is staffed today and where we're headed, I think we're reaching that max capacity. But that's not all indicative of assisted livings or nursing homes. We have an aging population in general, whether that's single-family residence or condos. And we have to, as a community, figure out how to deal with that aging population. We have, you know, we have a significant number of responses for all kinds of things. And so, as we, you know, we take into account the senior living centers and the run volume to them, we also look at everything else as a whole, take kind of that holistic approach. So, I don't know that there's really a mechanism to try to determine breaking point, if you will, but we know that if we do nothing, the run response time, the runs are going to continue to grow and the response times are going to continue to go up. And at the end of the day, as I've said numerous times, the board determines the service levels. It's our job to make recommendations to the township board and, you know, what we need to maintain service levels or have service levels elevated, if you will.
So as part of the process, when a facility like that comes to force, I just wanted to know, do they check with you in terms of, okay, this is how many facilities we have, we want to add 60 more beds now in the community? Can we, are we staffed in this area? Do we do that as part of our process?
It's part of the planning process. The fire department takes a review at it, but there is no requirement for an assisted living facility to check with us and make sure it's okay or anything like that there.
No, just our township.
But the township does, yeah. It's part, the fire department is part of the planning, site plan process and part of the planning process. So we get the site plans and the plans early on into that. And so the fire marshal and fire inspectors take a look at that and then they pass that information on to the deputy chief and deputy director so we can look at how will that, that's all that pre-planning and that's why we're trying to do this now is we're trying to project out and forecast out what is another nursing home going to do. That's why we do the calculation, how many runs per bed, so that when we find out that there's an 80-bed facility going in, what is that, what does that have the potential to do to our run volume and to our current service model?
Okay, and do we ever, I mean, mutual aid, who do we usually ask for mutual aid?
Well, it depends on whether it's a fire or whether it's an EMS call. We're limited to an EMS because we only have two neighboring communities that provide paramedic EMS support and that's Plymouth Township and the City of Westland. We've reached out to, at times this year, we've actually called Northville Township in Livonia to send ambulances into Canton because we were, we would already used one ambulance from Plymouth Township and Westland may not have been available. But for fires, we can reach out to Vamberen Township, Superior Township, Plymouth Township, Northville Township and just really anybody in Western Wayne County.
I know we also do, there are volunteer firemen's that some of the communities use around here, they're called volunteer, they're just, you know, they're not staff. Have we looked at using that at all because we're having difficulty in recruiting?
We have, but if you talk to many of the paid-on-call departments around us, they're experiencing the same problem that we are. And that is, most of your paid-on-call firefighters are working day jobs. And so when we're busy at 8:00 in the morning, 9:00, 10:00 in the morning, those paid-on-call firefighters are busy at Ford Motor Company or wherever they may be working and it's unlikely that we're going to get that response.
Do we also, you said some people only stay a few months. Do we have training, and we give them training for that amount of time, do they have to reimburse us if they don't stay? Do we have, are we looking at putting that in a contract maybe if?
I don't, I don't know if the appropriate place would be the collective bargaining agreement, but we are in conversation with Kristen Kolb about the legal ability to do that and whether somebody would be responsible for that or not. So we are working, we have had some preliminary conversations with Kristen about that.
I know I have, I mean, where I work, wherever I've worked, it's been like that. If you leave within so many months, you have to pay back so many years. Also, on page, hey, you talk about township-wide CCTV opt-in program, is that where you can see from the room, you can see like a gas station camera, is that what that means?
Technology's really developing, it's also that. It's just like the Greenlight District or even personal cell phones if people would like to opt in and send data from their Ring doorbell or stuff like that. So, those types of options would be available to us and at low cost, you know, but we've just got to get to that point and put the information to you in 19.
Okay. Those body cameras, are they warranted, the ones that are not doing so well right now?
For one year.
Just one year?
One year.
Oh geez. And that, the ones we, if we have to purchase new ones, it's the same then, right? One year only?
Well, it depends, it depends on what manufacturer you go with. Some manufacturers offer, there's multitude of different programs. What would be best is after we're done doing the research and come to a recommendation is we'll likely have another study session with the board to explain what company we chose and the reasons we did. Probably too early tonight to kind of go into details, but we are looking at warranty, we're looking at replacements, we're looking at all those factors this time as we enter into that decision-making process.
Okay. When you talk about your part-time staffing, you're trying to find people to do this just for developmental. How long is that program usually and how long do they expect, like six months before they expect to go full-time? What's that expectation usually?
No, it'd be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two to five years before they would be eligible to go through a police academy.
Oh really?
Yeah.
Is that not, is that unusual now?
No, no, it's probably more of the norm.
That's a long time to be part-time, I guess, if you have a family, right?
Well, a lot of these, you know, a lot of, keep in mind, a lot of these people that are seeking that position are college students. So they're in a criminal justice degree program, part-time works for them because they're able to go to school, work a part-time job, get experience and then have somebody potentially, but an agency potentially pay for them to go through the police academy. So there is a lot of benefits to the part-time employee at the end of it.
Okay. And do we work with universities on that at all?
We are in constant contact with colleges and universities. We, the fire department currently has, you know, a lot of third-ride students from Schoolcraft College that are going through the paramedic program do their third rides in Canton. Police Department, we take six to 10 roughly a year, interns. And so we, some of our best police officers and firefighters have been interns rather one way or another in the department previously.
And some of the list of stories you said that came forward to ask, was Walmart one of them? Because I always notice there's, I mean, there's always a police car at Walmart, is that?
What's the question, I'm sorry?
Was Walmart in your victims'?
In this case, not specifically, but when this all initiated in 2013, Kroger, Home Depot and Walmart were like the pioneers for this region of how we investigate like these organized crimes. So, they're regional investigators and national investigators are top-notch.
Thank you. So we know that domestic violence is increasing in our region, in southeastern Michigan and in our community. And I noticed, you know, it's almost triple your projecting from 2017 to 2018. How are we handling that? How are we training for that?
A lot of the education is hand-in-hand with Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. We actually have first step in our building, meeting with victims and we have officers on scene using our township cell phones so the victim doesn't have to use their cellphone to call the victim's advocate. So, let's say they stay in that domestic situation that they can't, their significant other can't find out that they made this phone call. We're doing everything we can to educate and partner with the prosecutors and the first step, provide resources for victims of domestic violence to find their way out of these situations. And first step, it's not only provides counseling, it provides coaching for jobs because a lot of people find, you know, find themselves staying in these situations because of financial restraints. So I think we've exhausted everything that we know at this point of how to improve someone's situation that's finding, you know, find themselves calling the police department.
When you go in, do you go in with a woman usually because it's?
Right now, all the first step counselors that I've seen are female.
Okay. And then if it's a different, various cultures, do you try to get somebody to help you there? I know some of our organizations have been called.
The initial response, we try to accommodate as best as possible, but at this time, a first step handles a lot of the aftermath, so. And this also goes to the judges too, they're pretty responsive and making sure that the local judges, the 35th District Court judges are pretty responsive, making sure that the victim's advocate is providing some resources.
Thanks. I know you guys have done surveys, did you get a big, I know you did a business survey and then a community survey, what kind of response did you get from a community survey?
We can, we can probably send that out to the board, the survey results, the results by and large were positive. We always get a few outliers, but that's the norm. But by and large, the responses are positive.
Part of those stakeholders, I didn't hear the whole, I mean, the whole list, I didn't know everybody. Were there any women in that stakeholder group?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, that's good. All right, and, okay, that's, thank you.
Just that, what's our relationship with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office? I know we had a situation a few years ago. Was that improved or?
I would say it's never been better. We, Deputy Director Vaughn, Deputy Chief Wilshire and myself, very early into us being promoted into our positions, made a trip down to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office one day where we spent several hours talking with their staff and building relationships and that has translated to an everyday occurrence. Deputy Director Vaughn, Deputy Chief Wilshire are in constant contact with the prosecutor. These ORC cases that we're doing, some of the larger cases, I would say our relationship has never been better, but I'll let these guys talk to them every day.
I guess I'll paraphrase, they essentially said, and this is a little bit of boasting here, what is going on at the Canton Police Department, you guys are knocking it out of the park. That was from one of the principal attorneys. And that just goes to case presentation and interaction with the prosecutor's office. Anytime you see a press release by Barb, she's in constant conversation with her PIO attorney. Kim Worthy is involved in every step of the way, anything of magnitude. So, she's actually, I believe, and scheduled to come out, we host the Western Wayne Chiefs meeting. So I've been in contact, she's actually going to come out to our Western Wayne Chiefs meeting, I believe, at the end of September. So that's, it's a big deal for us to have that relationship again.
How many task forces do we participate in and how many officers are assigned to those task forces?
We currently have two officers assigned to FBI task forces. We have one officer assigned to a DEA task force and we have, what am I missing? One officer assigned to the Homeland Security Task Force and then one officer assigned to Western Wayne is what we currently have.
Michael, we're going to go down the line. We can bounce around. Summer, Steve?
You mentioned turnover at the fire department. Do we know why folks are leaving after a couple of months? Do we do exit interviews to figure it out?
Yes, HR does exit interviews. It's a magnitude of reasons, it's a magnitude of reasons. You know, it's, there's contractual reasons, benefit reasons, there's relocation reasons, there's millennial reasons, grass is always greener on the other side. One of the things that probably goes understated is just not only the challenge of retaining them, but the challenge of getting them in the door. Currently, in the state of Michigan, it's very difficult, the paramedic program is a very difficult program. Last I checked, the pass rate on the first attempt was below 60%. So, you're looking at three years roughly of college-level education just to get a firefighter paramedic job in Canton. So, we have to find ways to better attract. If we're not, you know, if we're not positioned to do that through benefits, well, how else? We got to find other ways to do that. We got to find ways to not only attract the brightest and best employees, but we also got to find ways to fix some of the stigma and some of the reasons why maybe people aren't passing the paramedic program. And I know that Deputy Director Stockline sits on the EMS Committee for the State of Michigan and they're having constant discussions about that. How do we make that program better? How do we make the training better so our pass rates are better? The whole program in going into the high school is, right now, you know, these police and fire jobs aren't very popular. Not many people want to be a police officer or a firefighter. So, we have the challenge of going in at a young age and trying to recruit and make this, this a career that is attractive again.
Yeah, as you were talking about the grant, I'm like, yay, it's great, but if recruitment isn't part of the strategy, then we need to make sure we're getting good people that will stick around and invest in our community. I do have a question about training and I didn't see, and I'm sure it's part of your plan, it's just not in here, but do you, as the community grows and diversifies, implicit bias training, things like that for officers and Fire Department?
Yes, we've had department-wide training in the past. We've recently used online training. But again, that is part of our focus when we look at the, you know, some of the diversity components. Diversity training is important and we're going to look to build upon some of the training in the past that we've had and look for other training opportunities as we grow.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentation. It was interesting to be a part of the process. So, thank you for inviting John and I to do that. I just had a couple of questions through the charts. The first one was on Chart Six where you talked about the different crimes. It was on Page Three, the bottom. The percentages were changing of the different types of crimes, but I was confused or it seemed interesting to me that in 2018, you're projecting a big decrease in crimes overall. So, what do you attribute that to?
So, the, so the percentages, so the percentages on the right aren't necessarily percentage increase or decrease. What that is, is the percentage of, so when you look at, let's use retail fraud down at the bottom.
I understand those are the percentages of those types of crimes versus other types of crimes.
Out of all the Part I crimes, yep.
Yeah.
So, the decrease, the decrease that we're projecting, Part I crime is down about 12% as the last check.
Okay.
And I, you know, there, I would attribute that to a couple of things. One, it's, it's a, it's a regional trend. Part I crime is down in other communities as well. But particularly in Canton, I would also attribute it to some of the, some of the policing techniques that have been incorporated by Deputy Director Vaughn and Deputy Chief Wilshire. Deputy Director Vaughn conked it, the lights-on approach. We want people to know when they come to Canton in the middle of the night, guess what? The lights are on. And so, we do that through high-visibility uniform patrol. We target areas where we know that crime is occurring. And we do that through our statistical data approach. We took the CompStat model that was developed here in Canton under the leadership of Director Mutsler, and we've revamped that. And so, we now have a system that holds our lieutenant and our command staff accountable. They, we give them the data and they tell us how they're going to fix the problems. And so, we look at where are the hotspots and what crime trends are occurring. If we see, for example, larceny of tire and rims, last year, we got hit really hard with tire and rims being stolen from vehicles. We utilized all of our resources to target that and we ended up taking into custody two or three crews that were out stealing tires and rims and selling them in the city of Detroit. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, what I would attribute it to, good police work and dedication by the leadership of this department to make these things happen.
I look forward to seeing the numbers at the end of the year and hopefully they stay on target there.
We are gonna, we're gonna work hard to drive that number down even farther.
The additional headcount that you're talking about, is any of that in our two-year budgeting? Did we account for any of that? Do any of you know? And I don't need the answer right now, if you don't know.
So, with the staffing, what I did was I had a lot of conversations with Director Trumbull. We looked at projections. We did a multitude of different revenue projections and what it would look like. And as it stands today, the additional staffing will have a, you know, will have some, we're going to end up using a little bit of fund balance over the next five years in order to not only maintain staffing levels, but also accomplish some of the capital improvement projects that are needed. We need parking lots, we need roofs. There's a lot of capital improvements. Security around the PSD, which was part of the accreditation, that's about one in, over $1 million in and of itself. So, what we look at today is there's a level of comfort that these positions are sustainable over the next five years. But the beauty of doing these projections and the strategic planning is it allows us an opportunity, allows the board an opportunity to see things future and forecast and make adjustments or changes. And that's what we look to do. Again, we can use our models and we can tell the board, hey, you know, we need 120 police officers, like the city of Livonia, in order to do this, that, or the other. Realistically, is that, is that affordable today? Is that sustainable in the future? We want to take the approach, what do we need today? What's the bare minimum we need today? What do we need next year, the year after, and the year after, and make those decisions and bring those forth to the board for recommendations.
So, will we see in the final approval of the '19 budget, changes recommended from what you're talking about tonight? Okay. And then, of course, the two-year, the 2020. Staying on this chart, I just had a question on the first line. Is that the step increases that we have in the contracts?
That's step increases, but the largest, the largest component of that increase are the pension and healthcare costs.
Okay.
And again, those, those are tricky. Director Trumbull tries to do her very best to project that out.
Okay.
But, but, you know, for, for a couple of years now, we projecting, we've been projecting an increase in healthcare, but we've kind of stayed flat. Is that going to happen in the foreseeable future? I don't know. You know, I could shake the magic eight ball and hope it does, but we really don't know. We, you know, I truly rely on those projections that I get from Director Trumbull and her, her expertise in that field and to tell us what she thinks those projections are going to be. All right. Thank you.
My questions have been answered, so thank you.
Yeah, my questions were stolen by.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
Well, you guys did a great job. I mean, we had that big event here where you had the judges here and everything. Where does that fall under? Because I noticed you didn't really talk about that.
So, that is part of our plan. It's a work in progress. I just recently met with all the stakeholders dealing with the opioid, opioid crisis and the St. Mary's project. We're, we are very, very close. I don't want to give any dates today because there's still some moving parts that we're working through. But we are very, very close to publicly announcing the kickoff of that program. I can tell you that so far, do you remember the number? I think it was 36? Don't quote me on it, but somewhere around 36 patients have already been treated at St. Mary's and have, have had a peer support coach go out and talk to them, recovery coach talk to them. And of the 36, I think there was only two that declined further treatment. So, we know that the program is working before it's even been kicked off, so we're excited about that. We're going to continue to work with our partners at FAN and Growth Works and the judges. The judges are a big part of this and we're going to, we're going to continue to drive that down and, and try to reduce the opioid overdose in our community.
Great, thanks. And then, that would fall under one of your goals then? I mean, an added goal or something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One item that we've talked a lot about recently is video evidence. And one level is we have to physically drive that down. So, we need to have a legislative change to be allowed to send that electronically, right? Is that the county or the state driving it?
No, we, I don't think it takes any legislative change to be able to send that electronically. What, what we're working through with the prosecutor is prosecutor's offices has 40, 43?
Forty-three municipalities, at least, besides task force, state police, county agencies, all working within it. And they're receiving that amount of data from all these different locations. And think about the biggest agency, how many police officers in the city of Detroit now? So, and they have body cams.
Right.
So, all that information gets introduced into their system. So, they have to have a mechanism to have this seamless process. And they, they have a bid that's supposed to be announced pretty soon. It's supposed to make what we'll present to you seamless.
Okay. So, there is technology coming to Wayne County to address the transfer of video evidence in the future.
Yep.
The other side of it is the demand of the local judges and defense attorneys for the data immediately.
Yeah.
And then, you have to react. And what does that mean to your staff?
It's, that's one thing. So, let me back up to the prosecutor. So, the prosecutor's challenge right now is every one of these camera companies that has developed, as you can imagine, is proprietary. So, they want you to buy their camera, their software, their latest and greatest. And every police department in Wayne County is going to make their own decisions on what camera is best for them based off their financial situation, based off maybe what they have in their car, based off the recommendation from their IT, so on and so forth. What the county's tasked with, the prosecutor's tasked with finding a system that's going to work with all of those cameras. That's going to be challenging. And so, that's part of the reason we're kind of, you know, really kind of doing our homework and slowing this down a little bit is because we don't want to get in a position where we buy a product X only to find out that it's not compatible with what the county decision is. And then, your other question in terms of the administratively.
Support local.
Yeah. So, we know that in the next five years, as this continues to evolve, we're going to need additional records support. It wasn't included in 2019 because the immediate need right now are police officers on the street. Right now, I have one FOIA clerk and she is processing just a ton of FOIA requests. Then that coupled with, you know, the discovery requests from defense attorneys, video evidence that all has to be redacted, reports, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a, it's a burden. It's a lot of work.
You have to go through eight hours of video to give them 30 seconds of what is specifically asked.
At times.
At the date, there's been 756 FOIA discovery requests. We're up 16% on the year.
For the year.
But the technology enhancements, too. We have redaction stuff to help mitigate some of that time, time on the job. But there's also, as an attorney knows, there's discovery and issues with the prosecutor and defense attorney that have to, have to, there has to be some timeliness to it, so.
I think you guys have done a phenomenal job making the presentation. Anne Marie, a lot of her questions were point on, the, the decision we as the board have to make is what level of service do we want? What kind of response times do we want? We are seeing a deterioration in our response times today. If we don't react, it's just going to get worse. And as the population increases, we get, you know, hey, you build all these nice new houses, where's all the cash gone? Guys, we haven't figured out where we're going to get the cash from, even with taking into account all the growth in our community. So, we've got some serious financial challenges that we're going to be presented with in the very near future that I think that the team's done a phenomenal job laying the facts and the data, the information out. Now, the tough part's going to be the decision-making on the backside. You know, where do we want to go? Who do we want to be as a community? That's the hard part. Thank you. Michael, you haven't spoken, anything to add?
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a wrap.
That's a wrap. Any more questions? If you do have, as you go home and you review those goals, if there's questions, you know, don't hesitate to shoot us an email. We're happy to answer that. What you have to look forward to after today is now we're going to take those goals and we're going to plug all the backwork into it. So, now the graphs are going to, so the, the plan document is going to come together, the final plan document is going to come together. So, you'll have the introduction that will talk about the Public Safety Department. A lot of the things we addressed in slides tonight will be incorporated into the plan. And then, we're going to have that final document. And then, we will get that final document out to the board well before the November board meeting, so you have an opportunity to review and ask questions. We are also going to go back and do the same presentation with, we're going to offer this up to all of our public safety employees. So, we're going to do some sessions to where we, we offer that up. And then, we're going to, we're going to bring our external stakeholder group back together and, and present out to them and make sure that, you know, some of the things that they wanted to see have been incorporated into the plan.
Good, thank you. Call for a motion to close?
A move.
If those favor the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everybody. Be safe out there.